Housing policies and historic resources. As Victoria noted, the preliminary negative declaration was published in November of 2006, well before the Eastern Neighborhoods EIR and well before the January 2007 policy resolution. As you know under CEQA, there must be substantial evidence that a project could have a significant effect on the environment in order to justify an EIR. The substantial evidence must be fact-based, may not be made up of argument, speculation, opinion, or wishes concerning an alternative project. Potential social or economic issues are outside CEQA. They were relevant to the planning department's deliberations on the conditional use project, but that was not appealed and is not before you. This is also not a hearing on the policies of the Eastern Neighborhoods' planning, which won't be before you, probably until 2008. Yet, social and economic issues are the only things that have been raised today in support of this appeal. And that's all it was in the May 2007 appeal letter and all it was in Ms. Hester's letter of yesterday, which I note was submitted at 4:00 p.m. I got it at 5:30 last night. The planning department didn't even get it till this morning. I would ask that you disregard that letter. It's in direct conflict with your rules, which direct that appellate materials be submitted eight days in advance. In neither her letter nor in her testimony did Ms. Hester raise any CEQA issues or present any evidence of impacts on the physical environment. You heard from the planning department staff the extensive factual basis for why there was no evidence of significant environmental impacts, individually or cumulatively. Number one, there is no individual or cumulative land use impact associated with any loss of PDR land, businesses, or jobs. Unlike 2660 Harrison, the site is not zoned industrial, nor is it proposed for PDR zoning in any of the Eastern Neighborhoods zoning options. As Victoria stated, no PDR use is being displaced. Kelly Moore was retail, not PDR. Everyone paid sales taxes, whether they were a contractor or a homeowner. The store voluntarily relocated in 2006. It was not displaced. And the existing NC3 zoning, as well as the proposed NCT zoning, would not even allow a new PDR use on this site. It's zoned strictly neighborhood commercial, mixed-use residential and commercial. The draft EIR published for the Eastern Neighborhoods on June 30th contains a comprehensive analysis of the cumulative impacts on PDR businesses and jobs of new housing construction in appropriate Eastern Neighborhood locations. It concludes that those impacts will be less than significant, provided other areas are zoned exclusively for PDR. And that's exactly what the planning department is proposing to do, to zone some areas exclusively for PDR, but not this site. This site is proposed to be zoned NCT neighborhood commercial. Secondly, by complying with the inclusionary housing ordinance, the project advances the city's general plan policies, calling for housing at all income levels. The appellate's argument that there are significant CEQA impacts associated with this site not being set aside as a 100% affordable housing site is also answered in the Eastern Neighborhoods draft EIR and by the draft Mission Area Plan. I passed out to you a map of the draft plan, and it shows that there are affordable housing overlay districts that are proposed, where the Mayor's Office of Housing would concentrate their affordable housing money and super-inclusionary housing requirements would be imposed. This site is not in one of those inclusionary, affordable housing overlay districts, and instead is an NCT district that is not proposed to have super-inclusionary requirements, but is instead proposed to stay at the 15% inclusionary requirement, which is exactly what we're doing. The project will not have a significant effect on traffic, individually or cumulatively. And the NECDAC did analyze the Walgreens and the traffic patterns that would be associated with it, found they were not significant. Finally, the identity of who builds this project is not relevant to this appeal. The project opponents are misusing the CEQA appeal process for aims that have nothing to do with impacts on the physical environment. Ironically, they are in complete agreement with us that the right thing to build at this location is housing over commercial space. They are forthright in saying what they really want is not more CEQA analysis, but for this board to misapply CEQA standards to kill our project and give them leverage to somehow acquire the site for another developer. This is a disingenuous abuse of the CEQA process. Besides, their phantom alternative would require tens of millions of dollars of public subsidies that neither the appellant nor the Bernal Heights Housing Corporation has, Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. The Mayor's Office of Housing has limited resources. They look at every potential site that a nonprofit expresses interest in acquiring, including this one, as Mr. Franklin said. But in his letter to you of July 13th, Mr. Franklin made clear that it is not Mo's policy to participate in any kind of coercive activity aimed at pressuring a private developer to do a fire sale. Supervisor Almiron had questions about the price that Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center offered at $5.8 million. I want to describe that offer and why we felt compelled to reject it. Number one, the offer was that the entire site be acquired for $5.8 million, assigning no value whatsoever to the 16,000 square feet of retail space, which is worth at least $3 million. It also proposed a $20,000 deposit, where we would allow them to hold the site for a year for $20,000, and they would only be forfeiting that $20,000 at the end of the year if they could not come up with the $5.8 million to purchase the price, to purchase the site. Not only was that purchase price $4 million below market, but the $20,000 deposit for a one-year hold period was simply unreasonable. And my client was acting in good faith when he told Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center that it wasn't even close to being a reasonable offer. They never came back with anything close to being a reasonable offer. Instead, we're proceeding with the project that's before you today, which includes nine inclusionary units at no cost to the city. Let me conclude by saying again that although the merits of this project are many, the project itself is not before you today. Instead, you simply need to decide whether the CEQA process worked properly here and that the planning department and planning commission did its job in finding that applying CEQA standards, no evidence of any significant impacts on the physical environment, have been presented. Supervisors, please do not let the local CEQA process be hijacked in this kind of fashion. Granting this appeal would represent an unprecedented departure from California environment review law and would have long-term and negative implications for the city and its ability to get new housing built. We request that you simply uphold the law and deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, why don't we return to the appellant for a not-to-exceed three-minute rebuttal? No, if you, maybe when you were conferring with your client, there was a discussion amongst the board members as to how to run the process and...
Okay, so I'll do whatever you want. There were several disturbing comments made that I wanted to direct your attention to. One is, Ms. Wise said three different times that the only measure of compliance with the housing element is whether they comply with mandatory law, which is the inclusionary housing. That is what this is about. This project has to look at the housing element. It has to look at all of the housing element. And MEA has binders on. They only look to, do they comply with the law that they have to comply with, which is ridiculous in the ultimate, especially when this board has instructed the planning department on what they should look at in project review in the Eastern Neighborhoods and focus their attention by sending them a resolution that focuses on affordability. So, I'm not astonished. I just know that they don't look. But she admitted it three times today. I also was taken aback by Mr. Vettel saying that focusing on an analysis of how a project complies with the general plan is not a CEQA issue. It's a CEQA issue. It's a mandatory review in CEQA. So, why do we have no issues when we raise general plan issues? And why do we have no issues when we raise the affordability standards that are permeating our housing element, either the 1990 version or the 2004 version? With regard to the timing issue, this is another issue that both Mr. Vettel and Ms. Wise said. They said, "Oh, it's okay." This EIR came out in December of '06, and they didn't have your input because that happened in January of '07. They had a staff report, which dealt with the appeal of the PND in March, and yet it is not in there. Your resolution wasn't talked about. And the standard for this hearing is what exists today. And you have the Eastern Neighborhoods' EIR. Everyone has the board's resolution. And it is astonishing that staff says, "Oh, we only look December." What is staff doing if they don't incorporate information as it comes in? Both of those things trouble me greatly. In summary, I'm going to go back to the PDR issue. The PDR issue is an issue. It is not the only issue. I think housing is a much more important issue on this. But I kind of, this groupthink and planning, where they sit in cubicles next to each other and it somehow permeates their information, and they can't answer a direct question of who told you that this is retail? I find that impossible to believe.
Thank you, Ms. Hester. I think I do agree with her comment that consistency with the general plan and applicable laws is a relevant standard under CEQA and would disagree with counsel for the appellant. Ms. Warren, the law?
Deputy City Attorney Elaine Warren. What the checklist, the CEQA checklist guides the department in considering is whether a, specifically, whether any applicable land use plan, policy, or regulation of any agency would conflict, whether the project would conflict with any such plan, policy, or regulation that was adopted for the purpose of avoiding or mitigating an environmental effect. So, the specific issues, the specific parts of general plan policies or other policies of the city that planning would appropriately consider in a CEQA document are those policies that are adopted for the purpose of mitigating or avoiding an environmental effect. And planning routinely explains in their CEQA documents that other general plan policies are appropriate for consideration as part of planning's typical process of determining whether a project overall and all of its other facets, non-environmental facets, are consistent with other elements and plans and policies in the general plan.
Thank you. All right. Why don't we go to public comment? We'll have two minutes per speaker, and you can come up in any form or fashion. You can line up in the middle aisle. And I know there are folks outside. And once those folks who are in here are done testifying, if you want to clear out so that other folks who are lined up down the hallway can get in and have a seat, that would be much appreciated. First speaker, please.
Supervisors, thank you. Nick Pagolatos, on behalf of the Mission Anti-Displacement Coalition. Just to be perfectly clear and to remind everybody on this board, this hearing, this particular case, is governed by your 2660 Harrison Street decision. And the 2660 Harrison Street decision was not just about PDR. It was about affordable housing. It was about the impact that the creation of market rate housing has cumulative impacts, and it affects our neighborhood's ability to create affordable housing. It was supposed to put a stop to project approvals until planning could get its act straight. And what we've seen here is that planning has circumvented the board's will. They're still moving projects forward. They're moving forward a project that could potentially result in the loss of one of the few spaces in our neighborhood that's appropriate for deeply affordable rental housing development. And it's up to you, it's up to the Board of Supervisors, to be consistent, to follow your own logic. The same logic that applied to 2660 Harrison applies to this project. Frankly, the only difference that I see between this project and 2660 Harrison is the effect of money. And it's the effect of well-connected attorneys and well-connected PR firms putting as much spin as possible on this. And really, we want you to follow your principles, to vote with your principles, and to vote with your heart on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Susan Marsh, Mission SOO Collaborative. Over the last decade and a half, there's been a real land rush in the mission, as developers seek to capitalize on the area's trendiness by building luxury housing for young, well-to-do adults. This has accelerated over the past two years. For example, examples of this would include the projects on 24th Street, the two proposed projects on Valencia, and two projects on South Venice, among others. Now, this land rush and the shift in population it is bringing about has encouraged landlords to displace many, mainly Latino, working-class families living in the mission, as well as many small businesses. And it threatens to leave no available sites for the development of truly affordable housing for working-class people in general, and in particular for low-income families. A vote for this appeal would set a precedent for the preservation of the city's scarce available land for the construction of affordable housing by reserving the site for the construction of housing affordable to low-income families, the type that's most desperately needed in this city. And I'm sure you'll hear more about this as people testify. And also, with a vote for this appeal, the Board of Supervisors would also be putting its own Eastern Neighborhoods' resolution into practice, along with other city policies. I ask that you approve the appeal. Thank you.
Supervisors, Luis Coronados with the Mission Economic Development Agency. And here we are again, talking about the incompetency of the planning department. Here's the planning department that approved this project without having done, without having finished the Eastern Neighborhoods' planning process, without having done the appropriate environmental review. So, your decision for this project has to be based on whether this is good for the Eastern Neighborhoods and whether they've done the appropriate environmental review. Well, as you have seen in the paper in the last couple of weeks, the planning process for the Eastern Neighborhoods has not been done. It hasn't been done. It won't be done for a while. In the meantime, the planning department is asking you to make a decision on a plan that is not yet completed. So, how could they make, how could they make that recommendation on a plan that hasn't been completed? I ask you to not help implement a plan piecemeal by piecemeal. This has been their approach for the last 10 years, and this is just the latest, the latest example. Second, in terms of the environmental impact, your decision on 2660 asking to analyze the cumulative impacts of projects on affordable housing and PDR. I ask you, if they've done that analysis, what is the cumulative impact of this project on either PDR or affordable housing? The answer is that you don't know because you have not done the work. The planning department has not done what it's been mandated to do. And I'm directing this, not of the planning staff here, because I think they're doing a good job. I'm directing this, the leadership of the planning department, who has fought with us to complete that analysis. While these people here were talking and trying to defend their work, the leadership of the planning department was sitting four rows back. I think that's very cowardish. So, again, I want to remind you that your decision has to be based on the fact that cumulative impacts analysis is needed for this project. We don't know what the cumulative impact is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Alex Hossi. I'm a homeownership counselor in the mission. I work at the Mission Economic Development Agency. I work day in and day out to help our families in the mission to buy their first home. I'm here to dispel the myth, the misconception, that even the market rate units are entry-level family housing. This is absolutely not true. There's been very little information about the pricing of these units, but from one of the planning commission hearings that I watched, the studios or one-bedroom units would be about $550,000. The two- and three-bedrooms units would be $700,000 and up. First, I want to point out that if you want to take advantage of the city's down payment assistance loan program, the maximum sales price is $620,000. Let's say you were to buy a $700,000 unit in that neighborhood with 5% down, you would need an annual income of $142,000. And that's with a $5,300 monthly payment. Let's say you wanted to buy a studio one-bedroom at $550,000, and you could qualify for the city's down payment assistance. If you were a household of two, and I wouldn't want to squeeze more than two people in a studio one-bedroom, and you made $69,200, and you qualify for the maximum help of $85,000, you would still need a down payment of $185,000. I do this day in and day out with my clients. I can show you the assumptions that I use to run these numbers, but this is not entry-level family housing. And presented with a better alternative, I encourage you to support that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm John Malone. I happen to be co-chair of Senior Housing Action Collaborative, which is part of Senior Action Network. There, I'm a board member. We represent 30,000 seniors in San Francisco. The senior population over 65 between now and the year 2020 will double in San Francisco. Look at the census tract. They're there. We know the people are there. We are not providing housing. We are not providing housing for seniors. And when we are talking about $550,000 to $750,000 for a condo, not one of our 30,000 members is going to be able to afford something like that. How are we going to look? We need to ask our planning commission to look at the problem that is coming up, doubling our senior population in the next, what, 12 years? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, supervisors, President Peskin, and the board. And I'd like to say hello to your new clerk of the court, Angela. My name is Connie Ford, and I am vice president of the San Francisco Labor Council, and I am... And I am here to speak on behalf of our 100,000 men and women, working families, and 150 unions. I'm proud to be here, and we are asking you to reject the planning decision that was made in April. You know, I know that I don't have to remind you, but it's unique that I'm here. It has been a long time coming when all of the labor movement in San Francisco got together last Monday at our delegated meeting, discussed this issue thoroughly, and passed a resolution rejecting this proposal. I would like to say that it had one caveat. And the caveat is that it is our understanding that the property owner has been talking to other community members and the alternatives, and we urged them to continue doing that discussion. So, that was a caveat. I think you all have a copy of our July 10th letter that our executive director, Tim Paulson, said to you. But what's really important today is we're talking about housing and the future of our city. And we're talking about housing, not for the very rich, and not even for the very poor, but for the working families. You know, San Francisco people are all getting very sophisticated. We are all looking at housing and saying, "What kind of housing do we need?" This is a chance. This is a chance, right here, right now, for you to say you care about the future and the direction that this city is going to mean, so that our children, your children, my children, all of these folks' children can live here tomorrow. And we won't be able to live here tomorrow if we keep going the way we're going. So, on behalf of the San Francisco Labor Council, I first would like to thank the community, and I would like to thank you, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I don't think they're going to clap for me, but anyway, good afternoon, supervisors. I'm here to let you know that all of us senior citizens, like they mentioned before, we're getting older. There's a lot of disabled people here also, that we need a project like the Seven Hills. Believe me, it's hard to get to Mission when you're handicapped. So, I think their project is perfect for a 24-hour Walgreen drugstore there, and I hope you vote for this project, because many of the people that are for it, I collected a lot of signatures, are not able to come here because they're working, and some are too old or some are disabled. So, please, I ask you to vote for the Seven Hill projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Calvin Mulch, and I'm speaking for the Council of Community Housing Organizations in support of the appeal of this NECDAC. It is important to understand that in a city of 47 square miles, there's only about 10 square miles that is zoned for residential development. We are a city that is land poor. We may be financially wealthy. We are land poor. So, you can expect in the immediate future for similar struggles around sites, housing sites, to occur. It seems clear to me that the requirement of the negative declaration is to discuss in extreme detail housing policy, especially housing policy that affects development, that affects the course, pace, and intensity of development. It is generally conceded that affordable housing has fewer automobiles than market rate housing. That alone should be sufficient. I believe I was shorted slightly. Wait a minute?
You were cut off, I think, just a little bit.
Yeah. I want to make, the second point is that below-market rate housing is not affordable housing. Merely meeting the requirements of the inclusionary zoning requirement of the city and county of San Francisco does not necessarily meet affordability goals, also of the city and county of San Francisco. Being below-market rate in the second-most expensive housing market in the United States does not mean units are affordable. This is a critically important issue. Seems to me the board has made itself very clear in its decision on 2660 Harrison, the Eastern Neighborhoods' policy, and the current budget, which allocated $10 million for permanently affordable rental family housing. This is a site. We need to accomplish sites and housing. This responsibility is for you. This measure should be approved. Thank you. This appeal should be approved.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name's Giulio Soro. I'm a native San Franciscan, and I'm a high school teacher here. I'm speaking as a teacher and as is my students. No teacher would ever be able to afford this housing that is there. And what would a city be without the teachers that live in that city? Now, for those who are in question of this, in District 11, no students from that area would ever, our families would ever be able to live at that site there. So, any supervisor from District 11 that's in question about that, nobody from your community would ever be able to live there, okay? Now, part two. For this is, for Mr. Peskin over there, this is our international hotel struggle on the corner of there. This is just not a luxury condo. This is our family and our community, which is at stake here for our neighborhoods and our families. We are teaching the children the wrong message, that all you need is a nice suit, a tie, and some money to buy out some votes, because people are scared of a recall, to not vote with your conscience and heart. Because that is exactly, if that is the case, that is exactly what the right wing of this country is doing. Third, where is Jake McGoldrick? I don't know where he is at. Is he getting recalled somewhere else? He is not here, and a critical vote for something that's going on in our community. He has talked about immigrant rights. He is not here. He's talked about civil rights. He is not here. He has talked about tenants' rights. He is not here. What does that show these children and the future of the city? That when it comes to something so critical, that you could cower behind suit and ties? This is right-wing stuff when the man says that these are subsidies. This is what they say about women on the welfare. This is our families here. Last thing, in this struggle for peace in this world today, we say another world is possible. This is the Iraq War, these luxury condos. We are the peace movement, family housing. And last, on Sessa Chavez's birthday that we celebrate here, all of you who vote no on this, that vote yes on this project for these luxury condos, let Sessa Chavez, Gandhi, Martin Luther King echo in your soul. You will never be forgotten, I promise you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good afternoon. I'm Nancy Keiler. That's K-E-I-L-E-R. And I am, I live in the...
Please continue.
I live in the, a half a block from the site. I live behind the Steakhouse that everybody knows. I'm a neighborhood activist, okay? We do, we need more affordable housing for working-class people in my neighborhood. That's what is there right now. Also, this man was a teacher. My son is starting off in the city of Atlanta at $40,000 a year. That's what they start off teachers here. Do you know how much cheaper it is to live in Atlanta, Georgia than here? We have to do something about our salaries for our people, our teachers, our teachers. Also, we need a community center there. We need a community center right where Kelly, the paint store is right now, along with affordable housing, okay? There's not much more I can say. Okay, well, we need affordable housing for the working class, and we need a community center, and we should vote against the planning resolution. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Jake Goldman. I also live in the South Mission and near the project. We're going to hear a lot of talk, I think, tonight about how we need...
Well, this is housing, housing right here, right now. 30 family-sized units, assistance for people in the area who want to buy a unit, 15% affordable onsite. This is housing now, today, in the neighborhood for the entire neighborhood, as well as jobs and union jobs at that. Also, increased public safety at night. Now, these are not maybe strictly all secret comments, but these are, since we're expanding the scope of this beyond secret perhaps, these are all then something I'd ask you to please consider. And last, I'd want to say that the project sponsor has just done exceptional outreach. I've never seen anybody reach out to so many groups and so many individuals and hold so many meetings in the neighborhood, and I think that's a message, that that kind of behavior is something that I hope this Board would say they'd want to encourage in all developers in the city. And last, I'd like to just make a short technical point, which is that the appeal to this... to the planning commission's decision was filed more than 30 days after that decision became final. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Juana Lupe Arreola. I work with St. Peter's Housing Committee here in San Francisco, and I'm also with the Mission Anti-Displacement Coalition. As we know, San Francisco is still mostly a tenant city, right? It's the majority of people in San Francisco, especially in the Mission, are still tenants, earning in... usually under 60% of AMI, making most of the market-rate rental and ownership opportunities in the Mission economically out of their reach. At St. Peter's Housing Committee, we see over 1,000 low-income families with incomes between 0 and 40% of AMI who are living under unhealthy conditions, including habitability problems, eviction threats, and overcrowded conditions. These are also our working families. Caregivers, maintenance workers, cooks, servers, day labors, people that literally build San Francisco, that literally make San Francisco what it is. People that clean San Francisco, feed San Francisco, but are always at risk of being... of not being able to live in San Francisco. Yes, there is a need for more inclusionary housing units in San Francisco, which serves households with 80 to 100% of AMI. The rezoning process is looking to address these issues by integrating higher inclusionary housing requirements. There's also a great need for rental housing for low-income families with incomes between 0 and 60% of AMI. We are asking that the Board Supervisors be accountable to the working-class families in San Francisco. This project has clear environmental impacts, in that it changes the physical composition of who lives in San Francisco and that... and in that the physical environment of San Francisco. We also do... we do need more pharmaceutical outlets regarding the Walgreens. In that case, let's focus on saving St. Luke's Hospital and saving St. Luke's pharmacies, not by allowing a project that will ultimately make it more difficult for seniors, for disabled folk... for disabled folks, for working-class families to stay in San Francisco by driving up surrounding rental and property prices. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you. [applause]
Hello. My name is Jasmine Sio Mara Barrera, and I work at St. Peter's Housing Committee, and we're part of the Mission Anti-Displacement Coalition. And I'm going to give you a chronology of our communication with Seven Hills. Sometime in November of 2006, after having several meetings with community members in the surrounding area of the proposed project, neighborhood residents requested a meeting with the developer, Seven Hills, to present them with the community demands. In our letter, we stated the community's demands for affordable housing and neighborhood-serving agency on the ground floor. Seven Hills developers responded in writing, saying that they didn't have the expertise or experience to develop such a project, and if we could identify another developer who would be willing to develop what the community proposed, and they would consider letting go of the project. On December 21st of 2006, we responded in writing, informing them that we had identified a developer who was willing to develop a project that would meet the community's needs and demands, and requested their asking price. We didn't receive a response to our request, but we did receive a request for a meeting between the potential developer and Seven Hills. We had the meeting, but again did not receive the information we requested from them about their asking price or more information about their acquisition of the site. After not receiving the requested information at the meeting or in writing, we submitted a proposal to them in February. And it wasn't until the week of April 9th of this year that we heard the accusations from the developer about us negotiating in bad faith. We, as community members and as people who work in this neighborhood, are fully invested in making this project a reality. We have a real alternative that's being put out there, that has come from the community, that has come from grassroots, and all we're asking for is for you to really go ahead and hold the neck deck and then basically just let us be able to build what it is that we want for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McGoldrick, you had a point.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure members of the public know something that you probably are not always aware of. For example, Supervisor Daly's not here in the room right now. I wasn't in the room for a little while. We have televisions where we watch these hearings, and in fact, when Calvin was up there and the gentleman was up there, when we step out of the room, maybe sometimes needed to go to the bathroom or check the mail, we actually can do two or three things at a time. We have televisions where we're watching the hearings. So just so you know, sometimes if a supervisor's not actually in the room at this time, there's dozens of different places where we are watching these things, and so we do follow that way, just so you understand, because the dynamics are terribly important. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Supervisors. Thank you for hearing me. My name is Ben Grubb. I'm from the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center, and I would like to address quickly the affordable housing needs in this neighborhood, but particularly in terms of SEQA. The Planning Department addressed three criteria for whether a... that would trigger a SEQA review of a property. The last one of those was whether it specifically addresses the city's express housing needs. I can address two points in that. One, first point is that the Eastern Neighborhoods ordinance from January this year expressed a 65% goal for that... for new housing, 65% would be affordable. So... which is terrific, and that's what we need. So that's a pretty clear goal at this point, right? So it seems like that would trigger... if we needed that, that was true, then that would trigger a SEQA review. So I would like to draw your attention, this is my second point, to a report published in 2006, December 2006, by Kaiser Marston Associates. This is a respected, non-aligned firm that did this study after... in the commission of the... under commission of the city and county of San Francisco. So this is a city-requested document. This study has some fascinating findings. One of them is that the... specifically on page five, the study found that the creation of market-rate housing increases the need for affordable housing. This makes sense, right? Because you... when you create more housing in an area, you're going to draw in people from lower-income levels who will be doing jobs related to the services created by that new housing. So basically, for every 100 units of market-rate housing developed, 25 units of affordable housing will be needed, and this... this development by creating those market-rate condos will only exacerbate that problem. We need to address the affordable housing effects of this development under SEQA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sorry. I'd like to submit this report for the Board and Clerk's review. There are 12 copies of it. Thank you.
The Clerk will pick it up.
Supervisors, Joseph Smook, Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. A couple of things. First, I want to thank Mayor's Office of Housing Director, Matt Franklin, for being here and for providing the information he did about the consultation that we made with his office and the efforts that they're making at the Mayor's Office of Housing to support affordable housing in the Eastern Neighborhoods. Another point that I'd like to make, Jasmine, who was up here before us, set the context talking about the invitation that Seven Hills Properties made to the Mission Anti-Displacement Coalition for an offer from the community. The community then... Matt looked to Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center, who has the development expertise, as Matt Franklin noted, to be able to build affordable housing to meet the community's needs. We made a proposal to Seven Hills Properties. Just a very quick minute and 15-second story is that back in 1996, when Lucky Stores was proposing to build at the southeast corner of Cesar Chavez and Mission, an attorney named Steve Vettel worked with, housing services affiliate of the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center, to make sure that we got affordable housing rather than a Lucky Stores at that corner. And thank you very much, Steve. You did a great job, and we hope that you'll work with us to do this again at the northeast corner. We want to make sure also that you all know that the 2660 Harrison ruling does apply to this, and you've heard many times from Sue Hester and others more articulately than I can portray. And the reason why an alternative proposal has come up is because of the invitation from Seven Hills Properties and because of the fact that none of us wants a vacant site. What we want at this site is affordable housing, and a lot of other people are here to speak about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, President Peskin and members of the Board. My name is Shannon Dodge, and I'm the Housing Director at Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. I also live at Cesar Chavez and Florida Street, just a few blocks from the proposed site. I lived in the Mission since 1993. We're here today to urge that the environmental impacts of proposed condos be studied, that is that they be compared with the impacts of project alternatives, alternatives like housing that's 100% affordable to low and very low-income families. You've heard Seven Hills say... their representatives say that that idea is just a phantom, or that it's a ruse to cover up our true desire to live next to an empty parking lot for eternity. You've heard them say that there's no money for an alternative, affordable housing alternative. As members of the Board, I think you know that's not true. You've shown your commitment to affordable housing by funding affordable housing. You come to our grand openings. You cut ribbons. You know that we frequently celebrate the affordable housing that we and other affordable housing developers build. It's real. Our 500-plus tenants don't live in phantom buildings. They live in real buildings. We at Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center successfully developed 14 affordable housing buildings with the city as our partner. And this fall, we start construction on our next one, 134 studios for formerly homeless single adults. We and other nonprofit developers assemble funding from a multitude of different sources, so city money gets matched with money from federal government, state government, and private money. As a nonprofit developer, our plan for 3,400 Cesar Chavez would be different from the one before you in important ways. There would be more family-sized apartments, including many three-bedroom and some four-bedroom apartments, just like at Bernal Gateway Apartments, which we developed across the street from the project site. And it opened in 2000 with over 5,600 applications for the 55 units there. We would provide up to 70 units, as allowed, including a fourth floor, which fits within the height limit, because we wouldn't have that extra tall ground floor for the Walgreens. Our units, of course, would be 100% affordable to housing... to households with a mix of incomes. We would not have a Walgreens. We'd have a day labor center. We'd have reduced parking. I appreciate your time. Our project is feasible.
Yeah, Ms. Dodge, if I can just say one thing... can I tell you? I really appreciate the history of this site, what I think we need to hear in order to render the decision that we're required to render under the law. And some of you have spoken to this, but the more of you who speak to this, regardless of what side you're on, as to how this desert does not comply with SEQA, is very helpful. So the alternative project that you're proposing is certainly interesting and sounds great, but doesn't... I mean, the 2660 Harrison findings, those are SEQA-related. The more you can keep your comments on SEQA, the better off we'll be in this process. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Supervisors. My name is Jessica Files. I'm a Housing Project Manager at the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. I am also a native San Franciscan, one of the few left here. Here today really to speak... to speak to having more affordable housing on the site. Affordable housing has lower traffic impacts. In 1998, Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center did a survey of parking utilization rates at various affordable housing developments in San Francisco. Average parking-to-units ratio was between 75 to 80%, which is lower than the 100% required by planning. Based on this information, we proposed 44 parking spaces at Bernal Gateway, which was only 80% of the parking-to-units ratio, and it was supported by Planning Department and surrounding neighbors, including the Northwest Bernal Alliance. At Bernal Gateway, actual demand for parking spaces has been less than what we anticipated. Many tenants do use public transportation or walk. As a result, during outreach to businesses at and around the corner of Cesar Chavez and Mission, businesses remarked that residents from Bernal Gateway are part of their regular customer base. People who drive to their condos will drive into the garage, then access their units through the elevator in the interior of the building. An opportunity for the positive engagement with the community, which is facilitated by places like Bernal Gateway and other affordable housing developments, would be lost. Seven Hills' large garage encourages driving trips to the store rather than transit or pedestrian use. In 2003, nonprofit housing association, NPH, completed a policy paper on parking impacts. NPH notes that, one, creating a free parking to drivers certainly encourages increased car use; two, it impedes the flow of public transportation; three, it has a negative environmental impact by increasing pollution; four, has an economic and social impact, because a person driving to Walgreens generally will not walk to other businesses in the area.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Emma Gerald, and I'm from the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. I'm a community organizer, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the environmental impacts regarding how affordable housing creates more pedestrian activity and lower car usage than high-cost condos. Affordable housing residents are at least 20% less likely to own cars and are far more likely to utilize public transportation and walk to local amenities and employment. This pedestrian activity increases community engagement and public safety, as it has at Bernal Gateway, which is a Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center affordable housing development across the street from the site. Community services increase foot traffic, just like retail stores. The Family School, which provides job training and child development services at Bernal Gateway, has consistent foot traffic during extended business hours, and based on conversations with surrounding businesses, residents and clients of the Family School are significant members of their customer base. In addition, the proposed Walgreens creates car-oriented retail, encourages car use. Providing community services accessed primarily by transit users and pedestrians, like those at Bernal Gateway, encourages street life and also uses local businesses. During our outreach, businesses at and around Mission and Chavez intersection remarked that residents and services from the clients at Bernal Gateway are part of their regular customer base. Thus, it becomes clear that affordable housing and community services enhances pedestrian activity and safety and decreases car usage. Thank you.
Hello, Supervisors. My name is Ruben Garcia, and I work for Global Exchange. I'm not going to repeat what you have here about how important it is to keep affordable housing in the city, but what I want to direct your attention is to, do we really need another Walgreens? I mean, I really believe that we don't need any more. Do we need more Starbucks? Where is our business? Where are we going to protect the small business that make our city different? Do we want to look like Los Angeles? Do we want to look like many cities that look alike, because they have the same franchises all over? I personally worked in many of your campaigns when you were running for Supervisors, so I'm urging you, urging today, that you vote to repeal this proposal. We don't think... I don't think that we need another Walgreens. I think that our city needs affordable housing where our people can live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Oscar Dominguez, a business consultant with the Mission Economic Development Agency, here to speak out against the proposed Walgreens at the former Kellymore site. There is a preponderance of evidence that national chain stores, at best, contribute very little to the local economies and, at worst, hurt local economies. The Andersonville Study of Retail Economics, published in October 2004, found that locally-owned businesses generate 70% more economic impact per square foot than chain stores. The same study concluded that for every square foot of space occupied by a chain, the local economic impact is only $105, as compared to $179 for locally-owned independent retailers. A similar study, the Economic Impact of Locally-Owned Businesses Versus Chains, a case study in Midcoast Maine, published in September 2003, had similar findings. This study estimates that national big-box retailers operating in the area returned only 14.1% of its revenue to the local economy, mostly in the form of payroll. We ask that you do your part to support local merchants and the local economy of this great city by voting against this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Astrid Someta. I am the Program Manager for the Business Development Program at Mission Economic Development Agency, and my points will not speak to SEQA, but I do think it's necessary to speak to the issues that a large Walgreens will have to the local neighborhood's small businesses. Currently, there are five Walgreens stores already in our neighborhood, and if you know the Mission District, there's one on 23rd and Mission, and there's another one at 16th and Mission. This also does not take into account that the pharmacy within St. Luke's is also run by the Walgreens. Walgreens is not just a pharmacy. They sell a wide variety of goods. They have groceries, clothing, toys, other sundries. Thus, they compete directly with many of the small merchants in our community. Also, because of the size, it is an enormous site. It gives an unfair advantage that eventually drives small businesses under. Small businesses are universally praised for the positive impacts they have on the surrounding communities. These benefits include keeping profits in the neighborhood and more reinvestment in the local economy, creating new jobs for area residents, and a more diverse city. I do believe that some of our representatives came and spoke with you individually and
In 2003, nonprofit housing association NPH completed a policy paper on parking impacts. NPH notes that, one, creating a free parking to drivers certainly encourages increased car use; two, it impedes the flow of public transportation; three, it has a negative environmental impact by increasing pollution; four, has an economic and social impact because a person driving to Walgreens generally will not walk to other businesses in the area.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Emma Gerald, and I'm from the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. I'm a community organizer, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the environmental impacts regarding how affordable housing creates more pedestrian activity and lower car usage than high-cost condos. Affordable housing residents are at least 20% less likely to own cars and are far more likely to utilize public transportation and walk to local amenities and employment. This pedestrian activity increases community engagement and public safety, as it has at Bernal Gateway, which is a Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center affordable housing development across the street from the site. Community services increase foot traffic, just like retail stores. The Family School, which provides job training and child development services at Bernal Gateway, has consistent foot traffic during extended business hours, and based on conversations with surrounding businesses, residents and clients of the Family School are significant members of their customer base. In addition, the proposed Walgreens creates car-oriented retail, encourages car use. Providing community services accessed primarily by transit users and pedestrians, like those at Bernal Gateway, encourages street life and also uses local businesses. During our outreach, businesses at and around Mission and Chavez intersection remarked that residents and services from the clients at Bernal Gateway are part of their regular customer base. Thus, it becomes clear that affordable housing and community services enhances pedestrian activity and safety and decreases car usage. Thank you.
My name is Ruben Garcia, and I work for Global Exchange. I'm not going to repeat what you have here about how important it is to keep affordable housing in the city, but what I want to direct your attention is to, do we really need another Walgreens? I really believe that we don't need any more. Do we need more Starbucks? Where is our business? Where are we going to protect the small business that make our city different? Do we want to look like Los Angeles? Do we want to look like many cities that look alike because they have the same franchises all over? I personally worked in many of your campaigns when you were running for Supervisors, so I'm urging you, urging today, that you vote to repeal this proposal. We don't think, I don't think that we need another Walgreens. I think that our city needs affordable housing where our people can live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I am Oscar Dominguez, a business consultant with the Mission Economic Development Agency, here to speak out against the proposed Walgreens at the former Kellymore site. There is a preponderance of evidence that national chain stores, at best, contribute very little to the local economies and, at worst, hurt local economies. The Andersonville Study of Retail Economics, published in October 2004, found that locally-owned businesses generate 70% more economic impact per square foot than chain stores. The same study concluded that for every square foot of space occupied by a chain, the local economic impact is only $105, as compared to $179 for locally-owned independent retailers. A similar study, the Economic Impact of Locally-Owned Businesses Versus Chains, a case study in Midcoast Maine, published in September 2003, had similar findings. This study estimates that national big-box retailers operating in the area returned only 14.1% of its revenue to the local economy, mostly in the form of payroll. We ask that you do your part to support local merchants and the local economy of this great city by voting against this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Astrid Someta. I am the Program Manager for the Business Development Program at Mission Economic Development Agency, and my points will not speak to CEQA, but I do think it's necessary to speak to the issues that a large Walgreens will have to the local neighborhood small businesses. Currently, there are five Walgreens stores already in our neighborhood, and if you know the Mission District, there's one on 23rd and Mission, and there's another one at 16th and Mission. This also does not take into account that the pharmacy within St. Luke's is also run by the Walgreens. Walgreens is not just a pharmacy. They sell a wide variety of goods. They have groceries, clothing, toys, other sundries. Thus, they compete directly with many of the small merchants in our community. Also, because of the size, it is an enormous site, it gives an unfair advantage that eventually drives small businesses under. Small businesses are universally praised for the positive impacts they have on the surrounding communities. These benefits include keeping profits in the neighborhood and more reinvestment in the local economy, creating new jobs for area residents, and a more diverse city. I do believe that some of our representatives came and spoke with you individually and provided a pack of letters, a set of letters that were signed by a local merchant, local business owners, that were against this project. I do ask that you picture faces, you picture families, you picture the impacts that this would have exponentially if this Walgreens project does go through, if this housing, this affordable housing that isn't really affordable for our community. I'm not sure, I think some of you may have in the past or currently do own small businesses, and I do ask that you take into account the impact that a large chain store would either have on you directly or any family members or friends that you may have that have small businesses. Again, I do ask that you help preserve the uniqueness of San Francisco, the local merchants that do provide services to the community. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jane Martin. I'm community organizer at the Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center. And while we know in the community that our community needs housing, we know that we also need jobs, and the alternative project to build affordable housing will also mean the creation of needed prevailing wage construction jobs. Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center is committed to working with Mike Terrio, leader of the Construction Trades Council, on this project. Mike is taking leadership by working with us to ensure that we can meet the federal goals for hiring local workers, as well as the goals of the SF Human Rights Commission, while still using only union construction labor. Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center has a history of cooperating with labor and building union. We develop both our Market Heights and Bernal Gateway developments with financing from the AFL-CIO's Housing Investment Trust as part of a unique demonstration program to invest union pension funds in deeply affordable housing. This program came with a requirement which the agency embraced to ensure 100% union labor. By building affordable housing, we also seek to provide jobs to low-income residents and support disadvantaged locally-owned businesses. Our development proposal for this site has additional community benefits that the Seven Hills project lacks because we have a commitment to get low-income local residents into union apprenticeship, career-track jobs, and our housing truly helps close the gap between prevailing wage rates and the high cost of housing in San Francisco. Workers should be able to live in the housing that they built. Thank you. Also, I want to say that there's been a lot of neighborhood advocacy to get Seven Hills to commit much-needed streetscape improvements, especially to Cesar Chavez, to reduce its danger as one of the worst intersections in San Francisco. And if we purchased this site from Seven Hills and proceed with our development, we would work with the community and the city to maintain these improvements as part of the project, such as lighting, wider sidewalks, and traffic calming. By also providing overall less parking spaces in the Seven Hills development, the amount of traffic generated by car users would be less and increase the effectiveness of the streetscape improvements proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Juliana Milanesa. I'm a Bernal Heights resident. Thirty-four years ago, I married into a large working-class family, born in the Fillmore, raised in the Mission and Bernal, and whose next generation of children have been pushed out of their city, replaced by the privilege, who daily eat away the multiracial working-class culture that gives our city its heart and its soul. Those of you who lean towards the developers because of friendship, because of donations, need to reach into your hearts and make economic justice your moral value and do the right thing, which means supporting the appeal. The folks who do the work, who make the hospital beds, who clean hotel rooms, who do the day labor work deserve economic justice, which means affordable housing. The developers and the privilege have more than they need, and they will survive. In the short run, maybe Seven Hills will kick your butt if you do the right thing and support the appeal, but in the long run, you will find peace in your heart. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Robert Holland, and I'm the San Francisco Political Coordinator of SEIU 1021. We represent 54,000 members in Northern California, 18,000 members here in San Francisco. Increasingly, our members can't live here. And I got to tell you, I'm looking at this project, and your own workers for your own city, Supervisors, can't even afford to buy it. How astonishing is that? And how can you look yourselves in, well, let me just say, there's a moment here where we could do the right thing. And I'm just going to say, there's hope in this community proposal for 100% affordable housing. 100%. And you've got another proposal that's minimum, just minimally meeting the requirements. And just to, because Supervisor Peskyn asked for it, you know, the project should not be approved without a study of the cumulative impact that the market rate housing has had on this neighborhood. Because the Planning Department is in the process of completing this EIR, this project should not move forward without adequate analysis and planning. So I just want to just say to you two things, Supervisors. If your own workers for your own city can't afford to buy it, what are we doing? What's wrong with that picture?
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Next speaker, please. And thank you for keeping your comments on point to CEQA. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. My name is Claire Bowman, and I'm the co-chair for the San Francisco Chapter of Pride at Work, which is a GLBT labor organization. I'm also a resident of Bernal Heights and live quite close to Cesar Chavez and Mission. San Francisco workers, including many union members, can't afford to live in this city where they work. Those of us who do live in this city are being forced out due to the high cost of housing and real estate speculation. We fight over and over again in contract negotiations for increases, only to have to turn around and spend the money on increased housing costs. Working-class families are being forced out of this city. Most severely impacted are African-American families, immigrant families, and working-class queer families, working-class gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender families, who can't afford to live in this city, who can't afford the cost of housing in this city. This is why San Francisco Pride at Work has joined with the community in support of the development of affordable housing at 3400 Cesar Chavez. While San Francisco workers need housing, we also need jobs. The alternative project to building affordable housing at 3400 Cesar Chavez will mean the creation of needed prevailing wage construction jobs. Funding requirements ensure that some of these jobs go to low-income San Francisco residents. The Bernal Heights Neighborhood Center is committed to working with Mike Therothol of the Construction and Trades Council to ensure that these jobs are also union jobs. San Francisco Pride of Work of the AFL-CIO have both written to urge you in support of the Mission Anti-Displacements Appeal on the project of 3400 Cesar Chavez. Please support the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Wallace.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Howard Wallace, Vice President for Community Affairs for the San Francisco Labor Council and a member of the Board of Senior Action Network. I'm here to say that the fashion of kneeling and genuflecting before the market rate all the time is getting a little bit sickening. There's a war against workers in this country that's been going on, not just through the Bush regime, but before that, and it's especially manifested in San Francisco. A lot of workers have been displaced from their jobs because of high cost of the city and rentals. The Mission should not suffer any more than it already has for so-called "market rates" that are going to make the community better by having a Walgreens. I like Walgreens, but there are four Walgreens within a mile of that place. That's not what's desperately needed. What's really seriously needed is real, fair housing prices, and that's below the market rate. We can't be bowing to this as some miraculous device. The market is driven as much in boardrooms as anyplace else in American society, and we need something beside the boardrooms making this decision. We need people who rise up and defend working-class people in the city of San Francisco. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Lipscomb, and Barbara Blong, who's the interim Director of Senior Action Network, asked me to represent SAN today because she could not be here. SAN, Senior Action Network, is in very strong support of this project for low-income renters at 3400 Cesar Chavez. You know, there was a very shocking article in the San Francisco Chronicle three Sundays ago on the front page. The article said that there are now more dogs in San Francisco than there are children. And the writer also said that 1,000 children are leaving the school rolls each year. And then the writer said that this is because families cannot afford to live here. So what are poor families supposed to do? They certainly aren't supposed to live in dog houses. There's a desperate need for low-income housing in the district of the Mission and throughout the city, so we ask you to do the right thing and vote for this project. There are 25,000 units for market-rate housing, I understand condos, in the pipeline, and only about 1,500 for low-income people. Wouldn't it be a great day if it were the reverse? And that's what's really needed. We really need 25,000 units for low-income people. San Francisco, the San Francisco Supervisors have a reputation as being progressive, and the people who elect them are really working-class people, middle-class people, and if those people are no longer here, then the kind of Board of Supervisors that we have today is no longer going to be here in a few years. So please, think of the people of the city, but also think of your own futures. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lipscomb. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Supervisors. Frank Martín del Campo, San Francisco LACLA and the San Francisco Labor Council. This issue was debated thoroughly at the evening of the delegate meeting at the San Francisco Labor Council on June 9. It was not a unanimous vote, it was a debated vote. It was a spirited discussion. It reflected the different viewpoints, and labor made its choice very loud and clear. This was not a time to vacillate. This was not a time to be tepid about the issue. The issue is clear. The delegates voted overwhelmingly to support affordable housing. Let's consider why. Let's consider why. Working families are getting poorer and have more temporary work. Our wages are going down irrespective of organized labor's attempt to keep it up. If our working families' salaries continue to decrease, then isn't it against our interests not to support people who cannot live here otherwise? Labor considered the issue. Labor comes before you today and asks you, "Vote no on the current proposal. Vote yes on affordable housing. Support the people that voted you in." Thank you very much.
My name is Alberto Sanchez, and I represent Coleman Advocates Parents for Affordable Family Housing Committee and the 200 members that compose Coleman Families. I'm here today to deliver this message of support to the efforts of the community of the Mission to repeal the Seven Hills project and to create desperately-needed affordable housing. According to the recently completed Eastern Neighborhoods EIR, San Francisco is producing very low, low, and moderate-income housing at such a slow rate that it can't keep up with the drastic need of these type of housings. While at the same time, San Francisco is overproducing market-rate housing with no sign of slowing down. The Members of Parents for Affordable Family Housing feel tired and beaten by the incredible pressure to provide adequate and affordable housing for their families. They feel alone in their fight and desperate by the lack of aggressive planning to tackle this crucial problem. They ask the Supervisors to support the construction of affordable housing and to make a stand for the low-income families of San Francisco. They ask you to protect our communities from the threat of displacement and gentrification and to provide families with much-needed affordable housing. We need to work together to keep families in the city, and this is a wonderful opportunity to give our community hope. Let's give them something to believe in. Let them know that they are important to you and the future of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Blanca, and I am a member for the San Pedro Houses community. What I'm here is just because we want you to support the, I would like you to vote yes on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Buenas tardes, señores supervisores. Mi nombre es Guillermina Castellanos, y trabajo en viviendas, en comité vivienda San Pedro y la colectiva de mujeres de la Raza Centro Legal.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Guillermina Castellanos, and I work with St. Peter's Housing Committee and the Women's Collective of the San Francisco Day Labor Program. Trabajo organizando a las mujeres latinas inmigrantes, trabajadoras domésticas. I work organizing immigrant Latina women who work as domestic workers in people's homes. Con mujeres trabajadoras que hacen la economía aquí en este país, con los compañeros del day labor que también hacen la economía aquí en este país. I work with the working women who build this country's economy, along with the gentlemen, the day laborers, who also do the same. También trabajo con inquilinos que están día a día desalojados. Eso no es justo. Este proyecto no nos ayuda a nosotros, los trabajadores inmigrantes. I also work with tenants who, day after day, are kicked out of their homes. This proposal does not serve the interests of our community. Escuché hace rato que dijeron que 15,000 pies cuadrados para una Walgreens. Eso es una vergüenza. Es una vergüenza porque nuestras mujeres necesitamos una vivienda adecuada, una vivienda digna para vivir bien. I heard earlier mentioned that 15,000 square feet would be allocated for another Walgreens. It's a shame. We don't need another Walgreens. We need housing for our women and our families. Tenemos bastantes Walgreens. Tenemos una cada cuatro bloques. Eso es injusto. Es injusto porque si ustedes vieron a las familias de los hoteles residenciales en el distrito de la Misión, cómo es que viven, ustedes se asustarían de cómo es que viven estas familias. Familias que trabajan día a día para sobrevivir en este país. Eso es injusto, que San Francisco, siendo una ciudad tan rica, nos tengan viviendo en esas condiciones por estos proyectos que hacen, que son para ricos. Estos proyectos no nos ayudan a nada a nosotros, los trabajadores. Por eso... We have enough Walgreens in this city, every four blocks in our neighborhood. Do you know how people living in single-room occupancy hotels live? You would be frightened to see how these families live. They work day in and day out, and this is how they live. It's so shameful. San Francisco is so rich, and you have us living this way? These proposals do not serve the needs of our families. Todas las organizaciones que estamos aquí presentes estamos trabajando fuertemente para lograr unos proyectos, pero proyectos que nos sirvan a nuestra gente trabajadora inmigrante, porque nosotros venimos a trabajar, venimos a luchar. Nos están desalojando de nuestros países y nos están desalojando de aquí de San Francisco a otros lugares, como Oakland, a San Pablo. Eso no es justo, señores. Ya no hay aquí niños. Dicen que en el tronco salió que hay más perros que niños. ¿Ustedes creen que eso es justo? Eso no es justo. No estoy en contra de los perros, pero sí estoy en contra de estos proyectos. All the organizations here, we are working to push projects that actually do serve the needs of immigrants and workers, and immigrant workers. We are being displaced first from our home countries, and then we come to San Francisco to be displaced yet again, to be displaced to other cities like Oakland, San Pablo. There was an article the other day that there are more dogs in San Francisco than children. This is shameful.
Thank you, Renee. Gracias.
Estoy en contra del proyecto. Hay que rechazar este proyecto porque no nos beneficia a nadie, a los jornaleros ni a la gente pobre. Rechacemos este proyecto.
Good afternoon. My name is Lorena, and I stand here also against this project. You should reject it because it doesn't benefit any of us. It doesn't benefit day laborers or poor people.
Mi nombre es Hortensia, y nosotros trabajamos bastante, y lo que queremos es un lugar digno para vivir.
My name is Hortensia, and we work a lot in this country, and what we deserve... My name is Hortensia, and we work a lot in this country, and what we deserve is a dignified place to live.
Mi nombre es Josué Cobos. Vengo en representación del grupo del Day Labor Program, y vengo, estoy en contra del Walgreens, porque ya tenemos demasiados Walgreens como McDonald's. Hay Walgreens en cualquier lado. La gente que tiene dinero puede viajar en carro, puede ir a un Walgreens. Nosotros no. Nosotros lo que queremos son viviendas, no más Walgreens. En el programa del Day Labor, no ganamos lo suficiente para una vivienda de, de altos recursos. Tenemos muy poco dinero.
Good afternoon. My name is Josué Cobos, and I'm representing the Day Labor Program. We are against the construction of this Walgreens. There are too many Walgreens, just like there are too many McDonald's. People with money, sure, they can get into their car and drive to any Walgreens whenever they can, they want, but we can't. We cannot afford to do this. We cannot, based on the wages that we earn, we cannot afford the housing that they are proposing.
Los trabajadores de Day Labor, no hacemos demasiado dinero, necesitamos casas de bajos recursos. Mucha gente tiene dinero, puede irse a otros lados, a, a hacer más casas. Hay, hay una casa que se hizo un programa ahí en el, en la Valencia, en la Valencia, en la calle de la Valencia, entre la 18 y 19. Están haciendo un programa de casas de altos recursos. Pararon una obra en la que está en la Misión y 18. También una obra donde se están haciendo casas, casas de altos recursos, y que hay de nosotros, los pobres, los trabajadores, los trabajadores de, de bajos recursos. Necesitamos un lugar donde vivir, honestamente. Con, tenemos, hacemos muy poco dinero, no tenemos dinero para hacer, no tenemos dinero para pagar casas de altos recursos. Piensen en eso. Gracias.
Gracias a usted.
The workers at the Day Labor Program, we don't earn a lot. We can't afford these expensive homes. We need low-income housing or housing for poor people. There was a program, for example, or a project on Valencia Street between 18th and 19th, also for people with money. What about us, the poor? What about us, the workers? We need a place to live. We don't earn much. We don't have enough money to pay for these apartments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Sabrina Soto. I am 14 years old. I attend Mercy High School, San Francisco, and I am a member of Poder. In my community, the Mission District, we don't have enough affordable housing available. I am lucky enough to live in affordable housing. I do not know where I would be if I was not living there, because my mother is a single parent, and she wouldn't be able to afford anywhere else. So we are here to ask you for your support in making another project in the Kelly Moore site. My family earns less than $54,000 a year, and if you support this alternative project, families like mine will be able to have a place to stay. In addition to the affordable units, there can also be a space for small businesses in our community instead of the Walgreens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, supervisores. Mi nombre es Miriam Samora. Trabajo para el Comité Vivienda San Pedro. Soy madre de familia. Soy una mujer que también fue sacada de una lista de espera porque ganó mil dólares más. Entonces me sacaron de una lista de espera después de diez años de esperar. Y esto también viene al caso del impacto. Eh, es preciso que hagamos historia. Nosotros, este momento es histórico, porque el impacto no debe ser solamente físico. El impacto tiene que ver con la socioeconomía. El impacto tiene que ver con tantos miles de homeless en la calle. El impacto tiene que ver con los niños que duermen unos sobre otros y que duermen en sleeping bag, porque no tienen un piso siquiera para dormir. El impacto tiene que ver con toda la salud que se está dando en este país. El impacto tiene que ver con todo esto. Y esto quiere decir que si nosotros salimos de un vientre, tenemos que tener una vivienda digna para desarrollarnos dignamente y poder ser dignos ciudadanos y trabajadores de este país para hacerlo más bello, señores. No tengo nada más que decir que votar. Mi voto 100% para el proyecto de MAC, que todavía estamos luchando porque se apruebe un proyecto de desarrollo en la comunidad, que estamos llevando a cabo y que todavía no podemos aprobar proyectos similares a este, si no se han aprobado todavía un proyecto de desarrollo comunal. Otra cosa, le pido a los supervisores que, por favor, voten a favor de estas viviendas accesibles, que voten a favor del proyecto MAC y a favor del desarrollo en pro de la comunidad, y no para hacer dinero, señores. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Miriam Samora, and I work at St. Peter's Housing. I am a mother also, and I am an example of being a woman who was on a waiting list for 10 years. I'll tell you what the impact wa, is. This shows the type of impact that exists. This is a historical moment. The impact not only has to do with physical impact, but a socioeconomic impacts. About the kids who sleep on top of each other in sleeping bags on floors because they don't have a dignified place to live. The impact on people's health in our neighborhoods. We, as humans, need dignified housing to continue to make this country beautiful. Please vote for the MAC proposal. We ask you to vote for accessible housing and in favor of the community. Supervisors, good evening. Renee Saucedo with the San Francisco Day Labor Program and La Raza Centro Legal. As you know, the legal standard that binds you in your decision today is whether the luxury condo project would significantly affect the environment in our neighborhood. Enough evidence has been presented to you throughout this appeal indicating there is definitely that possibility. Hello, no-brainer. If you have any level of doubt, you don't have to deny the developer his project even today if you're not sure, but you must simply send it back to the planning department for analysis. Analysis is what is being requested to you today. Why rush this project through when there are possible adverks effects? Supervisor McGoldrick, where the hell are you? Please, 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 you and Supervisor Sandoval do not allow your personal or financial relationship to this amount of...
Well, hold on, Renee, 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 Renee. First of all...
Let it cloud your legal responsibility. This would be unconscionable and scandalous.
Ms. Saucedo, Renee, first of all, go ahead, finish up, and then I'll respond. Go ahead.
Our neighborhood doesn't need more luxury condos, Walgreens. We need low-income housing and a, and a new day labor center. The San Francisco Day Labor Program needs a larger building to provide better capacity for its comprehensive services to the day labor community. The planning commission almost two years ago instructed us to find a larger site. Here we are. We feel this site at 3400 Cesar Chavez would effectively serve the needs of the day labor and domestic worker communities. We would love to share a space with MEPI. We will continue to take over that property and stand in front of the bulldozers if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saucedo. Ms. Saucedo, it is my understanding that you are educated in the law, and the standard actually is that the appellant needs to present compelling evidence as to why the SEQA document is not adequate, not thorough, and not complete, and it's not based on hearsay, it's not based on opinion. It is based on factual evidence that you put into the record. Next speaker. Hold on, wait, ma'am, hold on one second. Supervisor Maxwell?
I would just like to ask you to stick to the facts. When you start making it personal, that, you know, you may lose what you have. So I would suggest that you stick to the facts.
You're not helping your case. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, board of supervisor staff and my neighbors. I'm Denise Jones, and I'm a local. My parents built their home on the north slope of Bernal Heights in 1957. In the last 50 years, we've all been shocked at the unprecedented demographic shift in the neighborhood. What was once a diverse community with every nationality and real middle-class representation is now becoming a neighborhood with a more homogenous majority. This shift is causing the loss of a vibrant, diverse stronghold. On the south slope of Bernal Heights, the underrepresented and over-exploited Alamania Housing Development Working Group is trying to employ, recognize, and give a voice to its struggling resident youth and other, quote, "outside youth," who possibly are resorting to gang involvement for survival. For example, robbery. There were 17 robberies with guns in my five-block radius for a six-month period this last February, and drug dealing across the street from my house for nearly two years. Car theft, break-ins, neighbors' SUVs being stolen from the driveway. I mean, with the crime rate rising and a better police presence that we had to fight for with the district attorney in her office and the police commissioner's budget meetings, and we also have neighborhood groups forming to facilitate better all-around communication, we still desperately need your help. It's my hope that the city supervisors and private developers recognize and respect the need for this new Mission and Cesar Chavez project to be built sustainably and below-market rate affordable housing and be multi-use, meaning it supports community services with alternative programs. Our day laborers should not be in the streets. This project must please focus on safe housing as a way to add, to abate juvenile crime, a creative facility for youth, education, employment, and recreation, especially after school, which we all know is when most juvenile crime occurs, and of course, a safe and fun place to socialize on weekends. Obviously, all of us do not need or want a Walgreens and expensive condos. Thank you.
Muy buenas noches, señores supervisores. Mi nombre es Héctor Valdés, y represento un jornalero más en San Francisco, al igual que mucha gente aquí presente.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Héctor Valdés. I represent one more day laborer like many other of us here in San Francisco.
Al igual que muchos de nuestros trabajadores, tenemos siempre la ilusión de tener un hogar. Pero vista cómo está la situación con estos condominios lujosos, yo creo que nunca lo vamos a tener.
I, like many others in my situation, many other workers have the hope to have a dignified place to live, dignified housing, but with this situation, with the luxury condos that's being presented to us, we think this may never come to be.
Para no repetir lo que mucha gente ha dicho, lo único que les voy a pedir es que digan sí a la apelación, no a los condominios lujosos, no más a los Walgreens. Porque como lo, a lo que va a pasar con el tiempo, inclusive las gentes que apoyan este proyecto, van a venir, van a terminar trabajando en Walgreens.
So, in order not to repeat so much of what has already been said today, I just want to encourage you to vote yes on the appeal, no to more luxury condos, no to another Walgreens, because even the people who are here in favor of this project, they're going to end up working at Walgreens.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Julio Loyola. Soy jornalero y miembro en el Day Labor Program.
Good evening. My name is Julio Loyola. I'm a member of the Day Labor Program.
Como ya muchos han antecedido, sí es un verdadero problema. Jornaleros, y quiero mencionarlos a ellos, gente trabajadora con limitaciones económicas, sería muy difícil conseguir una, una vivienda de acceso a, a su realidad económica.
As been mentioned many times this evening, it's a huge problem for day laborers, for the workers in this community with limited economic means, to find accessible, affordable housing.
Negocios grandes como Walgreens creo que deberían de ampliar su vista y buscar otros horizontes, no donde ya está la ciudad creada, donde ya, donde los negocios existen, sin dar la oportunidad a que pequeños empresarios, inmigrantes o no inmigrantes, les sea difícil poder crecer con su negocio.
Large corporations such as Walgreens need to start looking for other horizons, not in locations where they're already overrepresented. We need to find spaces for small immigrant or non-immigrant-owned businesses to be able to flourish.
Voy a copiar solamente las palabras de una compañera. Sí, somos personas, sin ningún tipo de identidad ni papel que nos diga "eres tal o cual". Todos somos dignos de tener la posibilidad de encontrar un lugar, luchar para pagar ese lugar, y tener esa opción de poder encontrarla, con una vivienda accesible, con un precio que sea accesible a la gente que trabaja en el área de, de la Misión.
I'm just going to repeat the words of one of the compañeras that was here earlier. We're workers, we're people with or without papers, but we have dignity. We deserve the right to be able to even have options for housing that we could then ultimately find and pay for.
Estoy acá para decir que queremos viviendas accesibles y no queremos estas viviendas que van a construir nuevas. Gracias.
Finally, I just want to say we want accessible housing, not the ones that are being proposed by this developer.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Ana Maria Loyah. I'm the executive director of La Raza Centro Legal, located in the Mission District. We're your nonprofit, community-based law firm in the neighborhood, not quite the Pharrell Lebron of my brother here, but my fellow colleague here, but we too have a big stake in, in the development in this neighborhood. The Mission District is a rich, rich neighborhood, rich with culture, rich with immigrants, rich with laborers, domestic workers. What we're not rich with is money. We're a low-asset neighborhood. The majority of people in the neighborhood fall far below the median income even of the rest of San Francisco. What we desperately need in the neighborhood, what we have been talking about for years and years, is affordable housing. And as we talk about it, our community is being pushed out, being pushed out of the neighborhood. This development that is being proposed offers 85% market-rate housing. It offers a Walgreens. There are plenty of Walgreens in the neighborhood, literally walking distance from the development, there's a Walgreens. There's plenty of affordable, of market-rate housing, but what there absolutely lacks in our neighborhood is places that people can afford to live in, to buy and to purchase and to rent. These condos that are being proposed are not entry-level housing. They, I would not be a...